Okay, it is Monday evening, October 23rd, 2023, in the Susan Toll Leifler Boardroom of the 1887 Building. Uh, I would like to call the meeting to order. Uh, roll call vote please.
Mr. Andre is excused. Mr. Gayheart?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Gatlin is excused. Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Uh, Mrs. Reckley?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
Mr. Barkus?
Here.
Mr. Forster?
Here.
I will note that this is, I want to pronounce her as she's.
Costa.
Costa. Is also here who will be seated shortly.
Great, uh, we do have a quorum and this meeting has been noticed for state statutes. Is there any community participation tonight other than, I didn't, doesn't look like it. Like if you guys are all part of the presentation today, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
All part of the class.
So I will not, uh, read the community participation statement. And our next item is to have Ms. Uh, Mrs. Costa take the oath of office.
And this is, it's unlikely too, I could be the oath of office.
Sure.
To notarize, I can't be the hand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Kathy Kastak.
Who has been duly appointed to the Elkhorn Area School District Board of Education.
I, who has been duly appointed to the Elkhorn School District Board of Education.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of sit office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of set office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great, welcome.
I sign.
Yeah.
All right, our, for, uh, next item is the Career in College Academy Student Presentation.
Hi, I'm Kelly Dunrath and I'm the principal of the Career in College Academy. And, um, to, to follow up this, the, the first order of business as a second order of business, I have our wonderful students with us, um, so I will get through my heart really quick. Because nobody wants to hear from me and everybody wants to hear from them. So, um, just some programming updates for the Career in College Academy. Um, our nine, 12 school is located on Gateway Technical College's campus in Elkhorn. And just some of the pieces in the call that have been notable is one, we have a cosmetology program that we partner with Gateway Technical College. Uh, with them, we actually hold that class in the morning. And that class is doubled in size, which is pretty amazing. And so we were, we were previously getting students in 11th and 12th grade. Now we're getting some younger students, so, um, our vision for that is that they would, they would proceed through the first four classes of the cosmetology program and then in their junior and senior years go to Burlington actually finished the program while in high school. So we're seeing more students realize that, which is wonderful. Um, our welding students have been moving into career-ready positions, so I'm gonna say this is a journey of about three to four years where Gateway was just offering the, um, the intro welding academy. Students would get the 16-credit welding technical diploma, which was wonderful. Um, but we were having students doing that in their freshman and sophomore year. So we, we thought, hey, wait, you know, is there something you can do? And so they opened up an advanced welding academy. And so in terms of our future-ready pipeline, we now have students finishing the 16-credit and onto the advanced and now finishing that and going into, um, partnerships in the community. And so we had at least four or five students successfully do that this fall. So, um, and I would have to congratulate Mr. Trotter on that because he, he is the one who secured all of the interviews and the partnerships in the community, which is pretty amazing.
I apologize, I just had to be back and it was annoying because someone wasn't beautiful.
No worries, no, and I hope you, and I hope he heard that, so. Um, and then, uh, we have, uh, an addition on the Gateway Campus in Elkhorn. We have four classrooms that will be ready to go in January. And one of the intentions of the classroom is to bring more nursing programs.
Is this additional classroom?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so it's off of the north building.
Okay.
Uh, one of the intentions is, is to bring more nursing, but also to use it for academic classroom space. And then there will be a renovation on a, right now it's a storage area garage, um, but to retrofit it so it can, so Gateway can offer HVAC classes. So while, while we won't have a program leading to a certification yet, I think it's an awesome first step.
Yes.
Um, for, for, for our students and also Gateway. Um, the students I brought with you today are our first semester Gateway Edge students.
Oh, yes.
And these students are quite remarkable. They are ninth graders. They, um, they started working in the spring semester of their eighth grade years. And what they did is they applied for the program, went to the orientation and then actually went to Gateway's campus to take the AccuPlacer, which is the college placement test that adults take, um, to take Gateway courses. And they all passed and they started their studies in the summer. And by taking two to three courses every semester, they will earn their associate's degree by the time they graduate high school.
That is awesome.
And they're in it and they're still smiling. You think that's amazing? And so, um, the coursework at the college level this fall, they're taking speech and biology. It's a four-credit biology course. Um, they're also doing US history with a CCA instructor, Matt Wolk. Um, they're doing the Avid Strategies and Study Skills. They're working with our College Connections Coach, Mr. Watson. And like I said, smiling, right? And I brought them here to answer a few questions that I've prepared, but also questions that you may have as well. So please stand up. Kinda shine, if you could, um, just state your name and introduce yourself. Start with you, Jacob.
I'm David Kathy and I am one of the students in the Gateway Edge Program.
I'm Yushy Uteez, I'm also one of the students in the Edge Program.
I'm Ray Alcandet in the Gateway Edge Program.
I'm Malay Kunki in the Gateway Edge Program.
And I'm Geogenece in the Gateway Edge Program.
And so why did you join the Edge? Why did you join? What do you think?
I joined purely because I wanted to be more challenged with my academic coursework.
I felt the same way, I also wanted to be like challenged with my studies.
Um, for me, I chose the Edge because they just came with a lot of perks that, um, regular high school, um, they'll just kinda add on to that. Not only you get to go to the high school, but you also get college credits. So you get to kind of shorten that time to go to college and finish with an associate's degree.
I joined it to get more college experience, that's why I have to go.
I joined to be more advanced in my academic career and to advance my studies and my knowledge.
Nice.
You can tell that they're in speech class right now, right? You should get extra credit. What would you tell other students who are interested in the Edge Program? What would you tell?
I would say that it's, um, definitely worth it. It's a chance to, um, advance your academic studies. Plus it also in the long run will clear your block of mind if you do decide to advance into a four-year college.
I'd say it broadens up your mind. So if you're like, I would want to seek a challenge, but I don't think I'm too ready to advance such classes. Um, it kind of, it's a mix of high school as well as like college classes. So we treat them, our teachers, instructors teach our classes like college classes, but give us kind of leeway because they do know that we are freshmen. So I think that's pretty amazing.
Oh, for me, I'd recommend it to anyone. I have recommended it to my friends. And I would just say, just do it. Um, if you're concerned about studying or if it's gonna be too hard, there's always a support system. We're with, I think about 16 kids who are also doing the same thing as you. You really feel like you're almost in this kind of community, you're all going through it together and facing those difficulties together and overcoming them.
I'd say that it's definitely worth going through the program. Sorry. I'd say that's definitely worth going through the program because you get a lot more experience and it's just better.
I would recommend it to anyone who wants to advance their academic career, who would also like to go through the normal years of teenage years.
Great. And was there one more question or should I open it up to the, to the crowd? Oh, your daily schedule. So what does your daily schedule look like? And, and, and please feel free, not everybody has the answers, but I know we have similar schedules.
So my daily schedule is, um, in the morning, I have Gateway classes and then I go to the high school, have lunch and on the rest of my day there, study home an hour, score and fight it there. And then I go home at the end of my day.
To broaden it up, in the morning at around eight, we have our Edge classes. So it could be Biology, Win slash Earth Speech and US History. And then I go to the high school, we have lunch and then we have study call and then we have our two extra classes. I'm taking band as well as drawing one.
Um, so, uh, like you kind of know, we all have similar schedules. Um, something I find that really works well with me, the schedules, is that we don't have like a class every single day like high school would. We kind of, um, only have classes Sundays, like for example, we have speech Mondays and Wednesdays. And that kind of really helps me because it gives me extra time to do homework and catch up on things. So that kind of really works well for my schedule. When I go back to high school after doing all of my Edge classes, I have choir and Spanish, accelerated Spanish. And I really enjoy those because I gotta kind of choose and have freedom on those classes as well as getting credit classes. And then my after-schools, right now I'm currently in, um, New School Elk and we, that is it.
I have all the same classes that they, that they do, except when I go to the high school, I also have German, accelerated, accelerated German and marketing principles, which also counts as a Gateway course.
And then I have all the same classes in the morning and then I have band and machine control.
And so they, they get to participate in all of the activities that the high school offers because they are students and both entities for us. Um, but I think the, one of the biggest surprises is that college courses are not every day.
Yeah.
And so understanding that they, you have them for a longer time, but then you have them, you know, Tuesday, Thursday, Monday, Wednesday.
Which is actually very similar to a college.
Yes.
A college schedule.
And, and when we spoke with Gateway, when we had this idea, we wanted them to know that we weren't expecting them to change their scheduling, their requirements, anything like that, that we were just gonna provide additional support to the students. And so they would see our teachers coming into class, they would see our teachers working with the students and that really resonated with Gateway. Um, you know, they wanted to still be able to have their professors have an afternoon schedule too or be able to be at the other campuses on the off days.
Do we have a shuttle that takes them back and forth between the two campuses?
Oh, yeah, between the high school and.
Can we talk a little bit about Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, what does Friday look like?
Um, Fridays are no fun.
Fridays I really like because, um, it is one of our, um, we have, um, Mr. Wolk as a teacher. And it is so fun, it's part of the class, it's the US history and it's kind of just guided by like what, um, we want to talk about and just important issues for us. So I feel like it's a really neat class because we all kind of get a pitch in, um, kind of shake the classroom in its own way. And I think that's a really unique class, so we have that for the entire time where I hit link. And then we take the bus over to high school and do everything struggle.
I'd love to hear from each of you. So you're graduate, you're going to graduate with an associate's degree. What are you, what are each of your areas of, that you're working toward?
I want to, um, work in the communication field.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure yet.
Okay.
Um, for me, I'm still kind of figuring out as I go through high school, I do have interest in musical theater or education. Um, but yeah, that's where I'm going.
I believe I would like to do something in like math, like accounting or something.
And I want to be a marine biologist.
Wow, awesome.
I think something that's really neat with this program is, I served as a Gateway trustee a couple of years ago. We were able to get legislation passed. It took legislation from the state level to approve Gateway to offer the associates of arts and the associates of science. But they will have an opportunity as they move forward into that junior year and so forth, that Gateway also has we believe it's close to 40 technical associates. So they could do the associates of art or the associates of science, or they could split up into those technical associates, which Gateway has always offered.
Yeah.
As well, so lots of flexibility and what direction men want to go with that.
Yeah, that's great.
So I think it, it's going to end up to be over 60 college credits. It will be universally applicable, um, as they go on because we're really making sure that the coursework that they're taking, um, you know, intro to psychology is universal to intro psychology at other four-year campuses. So just making sure that it has that transfer.
Wonderful. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question. I had, I'm obviously brand new to this. It's the ink drive.
How is it different from AP courses that are offered at the high school?
Because I, I have a hundred and fifty answer, but. So, um, AP courses, you, you still do the coursework within the high school classroom, but the amount of credit that you take into the college environment is dependent on the test that you take at the end of that person. And how well you do on that test is how many credits that you can take. And it's not a guarantee that then you would be able to take that on or that all universities would accept that. And so by taking the courses at the college level, um, they're getting that full course experience. It's not a high stakes test that they have to take as to whether or not.
And they're walking away with a tangible associate's degree.
And so they are starting their, their college transgressions with these courses. And so that, that does add this extra layer of responsibility that they're putting into the courses. But that's also why we wanted it to be a really supportive first step into that college environment. They, they did have a team of people around them.
That's right.
I think something else I liked about the Edge Program was that following that college seat time, it's really ironic in that it's actually a lot less seat time than a high school class was. So our students who are taking AP psych, which at the end, if they get a three or higher, they can receive three credits from their institution that they're going to. They're in that class for 65 minutes roughly, um, for two trimesters, the equivalent to two semesters for 45 minutes, but five days a week, a five-day-a-week, 45-minute class at college is a five-credit class.
Right.
So they're sitting in an AP psych class, the equivalent at a time is a 10-credit college class, where the students through the college are earning that on a three-credit equivalent schedule.
Yeah.
You know, demonstrating that same skill or level of skill acquisition. So it's in a way, and I'm curious if the students are feeling this, do you feel like the schedule or the pace of the schedule, despite taking those rigorous college-level courses, do you feel that it's greater than a typical high school schedule? I know you haven't experienced that or do you feel overwhelmed or do you feel like you have the downtime needed that you can keep up and that it's a more relaxed schedule for you?
I feel like in a way it might give just a bit more of a relaxed schedule, especially having one, one class for two days a week, another class for two days a week and then another class, one day at the end of the week. I, I feel like although, although the class can get a bit long at times, there are two, three hours. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but I feel like it definitely does feel a bit more relaxed and I feel like I, there's more time to stay up on everything.
I would agree with that. You have time to do your work, so I don't think it would be overwhelming because they, your chief, your instructors, instructors, my apologies, they give you enough time to do your work and they inform you beforehand, like, oh, we have this to do, you have this to do, we have a doc and everything, so you can see what you need to do.
Yeah, I would say it's more relaxed too. Um, it definitely kind of feels weird saying it does feel easier, even though in the long run, you're getting more out of it. But that's just the great part about the Edge Program, that we like that.
Also in the morning, since we start a bit later, we also have extra time in the mornings if we need to catch up on anything.
Going on off of what she said. It is really helpful to have our downtime that we have in order to catch up on the work that we have been assigned or if we're under any stress, we have time to decompress.
I, I would agree. We, we built in time before class and after class so that our teachers can still meet with them and check in. And, um, I think they also, you guys also communicate outside of class. And, and so I think that has been an unintended benefit as well, that they would form this community where it is free to ask questions that they can be like, hey, did anyone get that? What if we can be able to answer each other's questions?
You guys are all very super aggressive.
Thank you for coming tonight.
We are very lucky.
They are wonderful.
Good work.
Thank you. Thank you.
You can say great, we connect stage left. Ariana is the stage left.
Well, I compliment Dr. Dunrath before she leaves though as well that we've seen, geez, it was just two years ago, the first year of the grant. We've seen the, the growth go from 75, actually I think we're down to 65 students when like Geneva, first one to pull out. And what's your current enrollment now?
Our September count was 230, but I believe we're at 240 right now and I have calls every week. Uh, because our, our enrollment is July and January, preparing for January. We'll have another Edge cohort starting, so our hope is that we would have cohorts, you know, every year, ninth, tenth, eleventh, always running at Gateway.
How many students can you have in one, uh, an Edge Program class?
So, um, the, it's really nice to have a trustee. So we are limited in space in one classroom and that is Biology.
Okay.
And that's where they'll have their Biology and Chem. It is 16 students, however, um, Gateway has, has been open to having multiple sections as our numbers. So right now we really hit that 16. We hit that 16 and we were like, okay, let's get this off the ground. Um, but I already have students who are signed up for the Edge to start next year. So that even in their September and October of their eighth grade year, they are already reaching out to me, taking the tour, filling out the paperwork and then just being on that communication to take their AccuPlacer in the spring. So we will be sending out, um, marketing materials to everyone so that they know, um, our timelines.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah.
So what's the plan if you have, say, thirty people for a 16?
Celebrate.
The more the merrier.
Yeah, but it will be the, in speech, they'll be able to be in that cohort of 30, but then when Biology happens, when their lecture, yeah. A lecture would be one day and then the lab would be split up.
So at this point, we're not having to limit, right, and or turn people away.
No, and that's where Gateway, they're not in a fiscal position where they want to turn people away either.
Right.
That was a conversation we had that, you know, we weren't, they had as, as a trustee for them was, it, that makes no sense to
Right.
run a cohort of 16 and all these other classes where you could be having 25, some of them up to 30 kids, very effectively being instructed.
Right.
That's a huge money loss.
Yes.
For you. And so there are classes like the Biology Lab where those structured psychologists do, where here's your laptop.
Yep.
And come in. I think ultimately, I think within three years, we'll see cohorts of 50 at each grade level, possibly. And I really believe that ultimately, because of the way the schedule is for the kids and the pace of it is better, I think we could see as high as half our high school students following a similar type.
I can, I can envision that as well and.
And I, I think everybody gets caught off, off guard in terms of eighth graders taking the AccuPlacer. But to understand where our, our middle, our elementary and middle school get the students.
Yeah.
That it's not a heavy lift to be able to test into English Cap One and college-level math.
Yeah.
So I, I think that, that to me, when we were first talking with Gateway, was, was something that, that I had said, let's see where, where they, where they test. Because I don't know, we're, we're going to see him and.
I love this so much. My, my oldest who's graduated 10 years ago, you know, he, he would have eaten this up. This would have been perfect for him, but.
Yeah, they, they are really.
I'm so happy that we have it now.
And I, I know other states are doing it.
Yeah.
But this is, this is pioneer work.
That's awesome.
Here in Wisconsin, which is really amazing. So it's just so awesome to be a part of it. And no other district is, is allowing this type of innovation and partnership.
Yeah.
Other than Elkhorn. So we thank all of you for being able to do this.
Well.
This is amazing.
It's awesome.
Are all of our, is all of our cohort, like resident Elkhorn students or do we have open enrollment?
We do have open enrollment.
So your total population at CCA is about 60% open enrollment, 40% resident, right?
Yeah. We have students driving from New Berlin.
Yeah.
The Jamesville side of Columbia, recognizing this opportunity and wanting to be a part of it.
And the efficiency with which they, they operate is well below the open enrollment amount with the, the size of the population now.
About 5,000 or so.
Wow, that's amazing.
Operating in a very efficient model as well. So I think there's a lot of, lot of pros to that. I want to go back real quick too, because, I mean, you talked about the cosmetology program, but I know, you know, in getting my haircut and talking to person who cuts my hair, they're just blown away the fact that what a financial difference that would make for people going into that profession to say. Because of those colleges, you know, that many of them go to are tens of thousands of dollars by the time they get through there.
Very pricey and so when we think of 150 to 160 of our students actively taking classes, we also have to go to the bookstore and individually get all of their materials. So we are, we are getting the welding kits, we're getting the cosmetology kits and then we're getting, you know, the books for, for every student. So it is three times a year that we are registering, getting materials because it is fall, spring and summer.
Yeah.
Um, but still able to fund the college courses and staffing at a level, um, much below that per pupil.
That's great.
And you may have seen the, the Facebook post that went out that was sharing that Elkhorn Area High School was the number one in credentials in the state that they were issued. That didn't include the credential numbers from CCA or from options.
Oh, my goodness.
That's just our high school. So when you look at the district combined, I'd have to get that from Gateway when they share that, but it's, it's very.
That's incredible.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next on the agenda is the approval of the school board minutes. Um, we have regular and closed sessions for meeting minutes from October 9th. Um, the closed session minutes were handed out to you, had, are provided for you ahead of time. I'm thinking we should probably do those separately, Joseph? Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'll move to approve the minutes of the October 9th, 2023 Regular Sessions School Board Meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the October 9th. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the October ninth regular session school board meeting as presented. Um, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Barkis?
Yes.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Um, and then we need a motion to approve the closed session.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the October ninth, twenty twenty-three, both sessions school board meeting is presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the October ninth closed session school board meeting as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Barkis?
I'm staying.
Mr. Forrester?
I'm staying.
And then Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
And then uh looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the October eighteenth school board meeting.
I move to approve minutes of the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
So I moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the October eighteenth school board meeting as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Barkis?
Yes.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
All right. And I move to approve the minutes of the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three closed session school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the October eighteenth closed session school board meeting. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Barkis?
I'm staying.
Mr. Forrester?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
All right, all of those have passed. General and other fund bills.
The general and other fund bills, evening coverage checks number one five zero four four three through one five zero five six zero. Wire transfers three forty-two through three fifty-four and ACH checks numbers two one four through two forty-seven, the combined amount of four hundred one thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. And then I provided a memo with some additional information on on several of the bills in your board picture.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Truman? Um, I just have one. Um uh for the East River Community School liquidated damage.
That was for uh uh late resignation for a teacher we would have hired.
Oh, got it.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just pretty sure what that's, that's, okay, perfect. That was all I had. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, I am looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, check numbers one five zero four four three to one five zero five six zero. Wire numbers three four two to three five four and ACH numbers two one four to two four seven in the combined amount of four hundred one thousand seven, sorry, seventy-nine thousand dollars and fifty-six cents as presented.
Is there a?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the general and other fund bills of October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, check numbers one five zero four four three to one five zero five six zero. Wire numbers three four two to three five four and ACH numbers two one four to two four seven in a combined amount of four hundred one thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Barkis?
Yes.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
All right. Um, next on the I don't on the agenda, the adoption of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four EASD health standards.
All right, the policy committee had an opportunity to go through the health standards that um were reviewed at the beginning of the year, but there's a request to.
No, yeah, that we, it was reviewed at the um annual meeting.
Correct, at the annual meeting.
And I always.
Right. And so um some changes were made to the health standards in regards to the verbiage um listed there. In particular, communicable is switch-stricken and changed to contagious disease to provide more clarity there.
It actually makes it more ambiguous. And I'll tell you why.
Well. From the uh policy committee's interpretation, but you're welcome to to speak to the end uh yeah, as a nurse, that'd be appreciated if you want to. They did list some specifics there.
Yeah, the specifics were not listed before.
Right.
So go ahead.
Right. So communicable is actually more of an appropriate term in that we teach prevention for a variety of illnesses. Contagiousness, while usually used interchangeably, is appropriate in most instances. However, there are communicable diseases diseases that we teach prevention of such as um malaria.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because we teach the use of insect bites and things like that. That is actually not a contagious disease, cannot you cannot pass that person to person and therefore communicable disease is actually the appropriate term.
So is something like malaria, something that we're teaching? I mean, that's.
We're teaching, we're that, we're teaching, but we're teaching prevention to young students such as use of insect repellent, use of DEET and things like that. We do teach that in elementary levels to children. Um, so therefore it is a prevention measure of a communicable disease, not a contagious disease.
Right. I think my opposition to the word communicable without definition was the fact that there are communicable diseases that pre uh kindergartners and first and second and third graders do not need to be taught.
Okay, but we're not, but the curriculum itself is not teaching about what the communicable diseases that you're talking about. Those things are presented in a age-appropriate manner at the age-appropriate time. Um, so therefore I just don't understand why contagious needed to be, I guess, the misconception of communicable disease, while it's the normal vernacular in a healthcare setting as well as in health teaching. So when a health educator goes to their classes, they're taught how to teach about communicable disease, not necessarily contagious disease. Like I said, because the terms can be used interchangeably in a lot of instances, it's okay. However, we are teaching prevention for communicable disease, whether the verbiage is there or not.
So you would you would propose to leave communicable?
I would propose to leave communicable because it is a more appropriate term.
And leave the the blue though would give that specificity of which concepts are being taught at that grade level.
Well. I just don't want to use the word communicable without definition.
So go ahead and define it, but I mean, the definition of communicable disease is isn't anything nefarious.
I understand that, but that without defining it, it leaves it open to a lot of things that small children don't need to be taught.
Okay, but you, again, in the policy, you're talking about what you're gonna teach in the curriculum, so therefore I don't understand how it opens the door.
That's what I'm saying. I I said I'm fine with the word communicable as long as it's defined, as it is now. It was not defined before.
Okay, all right, that's.
So we're okay going back to communicable there because there's now greater specificity.
Maybe an and.
Um, I was gonna say an or.
And or.
That's fine. As long as as long as we don't remove communicable, because it is the generally accepted word for health educators, health.
Sure, and and I get that. I'm just not willing to use the word without some definition, which we are adding, so.
Okay, so is it property, say communicable and contagious, is that the proper way?
It's redundant. Um, it's redundant in a lot of ways because contagious, I mean, if you look up contagious disease, it actually uses communicable disease in its definition. So therefore it's kind of, um, it's kind of redundant. But I mean, if you want.
I think the illnesses that some were associated with communicable aren't contagious because they can be passed from human to human.
Right. Contagious is human.
So that doesn't provide any.
That it can be passed from a vector as well. So it can be passed from a mosquito. It can be passed from a mouse. It can be passed to a human.
Sure.
So and we teach prevention, especially from from the standpoint of mosquitoes because we do ta, we do teach prevention of um of malaria through use of insect repellent. Um, we teach uh about um preventing Lyme disease and tick bites, which are also a vector disease.
For sure.
Right.
All right. So I think when going through, okay, let's continue to go through, because a lot of it is the changing of that verbiage.
Right.
What I'm hearing from here, from, this is Reckles is uh proposing to switch that back as a more
as a more accurate.
Appropriate medical, okay. Uh, we did strike, describe internal factors such as personalized least remotions, which can.
And that was for the younger grades.
Then grades six through eight, I don't know.
Again, for younger, um, the verbiage was changed for the younger kids.
Can we stop at grade six, eight on number three? Uh, learning priority, demonstrate, apply strategies to access. Um, we have three, three, A two, and we just, we changed it from locate to discuss how to find. So I'm we not teaching them where to locate the sources or are I'm I'm confused as to why that changed.
Honestly, I have no idea. I didn't propose that change. I don't know. I don't remember the source of that one.
Jason, I can comment on that. This is Amy G. Um, I, we still feel that this is an important skill standard to teach. Uh, rather than spending class time where the the verb is locate sources, we thought we would just bring that down a notch to discuss how to find sources of valid health information from homeschooling community. So we're still teaching that process, but we wouldn't necessarily have them locate those things in the classroom.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Sure.
Hey, and I don't believe there were changes at the nine twelve rule, were there?
I don't think so.
So I think what I would recommend is perhaps Heather making the motion with the modified changes of switching. I we just do changes as discussed. We have that recorded and.
Sure.
Yeah, but it should still be a first reading of it, right?
No.
This because this isn't a policy, it's a standard.
Okay.
Adoption of health standards.
I move to adopt the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four how the health standards that have been reviewed and revised
as discussed.
As discussed.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four EASD health standards as modified and discussed in the meeting. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Barkis?
Yes.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
And Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Okay. And now the adoption of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four district budget.
This evening, the school boards uh being asked to consider the adoption of our official two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four uh district budget. As you're aware, it's the journey through the budget process, there's certain information we don't have until this time of the year. At the last meeting I shared with you, the last piece was our state aid number, which we're required to get that by October fifteenth. We got it on the thirteenth, the DPI gave us that Friday um and shared that for all the school districts in the state. Couple of things I wanted to highlight, um the increase in the overall funding for schools and the state commitment to the two-thirds funding included equalization aid increase. That's our our largest increase um in terms of school funding um across the state and that number is distributed based on the property value behind each and every student. So school districts that have a lower property value per student receive more in equalization aid than a district that has has a higher student equalization aid. The school levy tax credit um is is a number that shows up on our tax bills and it becomes a subject, becomes a a credit that reduces the net uh property taxes for school district. This is the largest increase that's ever happened with this number, and it's actually larger than the equalization aid. Um, and what's interesting is these dollars are distributed based on the 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 higher the property value, the larger the credit that comes across. So for our school district, the estimates that I've seen calculate is about seven hundred fifty to a million dollars, which will come through as part of a credit across eight municipalities and how many taxpayers in that. So we don't really know how that's gonna affect everyone. You know, probably will be different, but it certainly will be a larger number. I think it's fair to say than what has been there in in years past. So with the the state aid increasing about three point seven percent, but the voucher payment also is a reduction and that reduces it to about a two point nine um percent increase. But if you kind of scroll through the rest of this, most of this we covered at the last meeting. Um, but I think if you if you go down to the next couple of pages, Jason, uh, we talked about the enrollment.
I, real quick, Bill, I I want to just bring up a point on that state aids and speak of that because we did have there'd be an article in the Lake Geneva Regional News, I know. Uh, one of the reporters, we shall soon be to ask, and and they pointed out that we're one of only three of fourteen or fifteen districts in Walworth County that received an increase in the state aid. The question is, what are you gonna do with the extra money? Okay, and in that, that's, I I can see where that would be that perception, but the reality is, and that's what I explained, the state aids an increase in spending doesn't mean we have more money in our budget. It lowers the local tax levy, which is good for our local taxpayers, helps lower the mill rate, helps lower how much they have to contribute because it's the state getting more, but we're still capped by the revenue limit. And so it's not more money for us to operate with.
Yeah, perfect point. Um, so then we talked about the enrollment numbers of those that go down based on our third Friday count. Um, the next page is kind of go through the changes in terms of the the staffing and some of that's reductions and then some of that's looking at additional staffing for special education and EL physicians from the school district. Um.
When you see T O S, that means transfer of service. When we have a student that has English learning needs or special education needs, if they move into the district, we can increase our revenue limit to cover their additional education costs.
Um, then we had some additional staffing for the career in college academy, and again, that's based on the growth in that program. We kind of talked about that earlier today. Um, we had a grant that offset some school site costs and that ended last year, so it's making up the difference with that. And then we added with the lacrosse sports program this year, happened the first time. General highlights, um, wages uh for professional support staff, we provided basically what was called a step increase on the salary schedule, so it's about a one point four to one point five percent increase. Administrators remain basically at the same level, so there was no increase. There were a couple of market adjustments, but for the majority of administrative and supervisors, um, it was status quo in terms of compensation. Student transportation was going up about three percent. Health insurance, we are estimating about five percent. We talked about that at a previous meeting. We were looking as high as thirty-four percent in some plans, and by going self-funded, we're budgeting around five or six percent.
Yeah.
So significantly difference in terms of moving towards self-funded. So significantly difference in terms of moving towards self-funded plan. Um, overall, about two point seven percent increase in, in expenses. I mentioned the state equalization aid. As a result of all of those factors, um, the actual levy is going up about two point seven percent. So it's actually less than what was approved at the annual meeting. Um, and the uh equalized value is going up over sixteen percent. So our mill rate's dropping over eleven percent. But in reality, it doesn't mean taxes are going down. This means property values have gone up and
Yeah.
The impact of the combination shows a lower rate. That's all that means. Um, this is the formula we go through in terms of our revenue cap. And the number that we were waiting for was the voucher payment last year at this time, and it's kind of the it's kind of hard to see, I know, but if you, it's, it's the orange number, um. Yeah, Google, I'll move on our tree cam, Jason. Yeah, that, that five hundred and twenty-two thousand last year was three hundred and eight thousand. So what happens there is that becomes a reduction on our equalization aid and the difference is made up in the tax levy. Um, when we put the budget together, I was somewhat conservative on the, the state aids for this year. So the net impact of all that still ends up being a reduction in the tax levy from what was approved back at the, the annual meeting.
What was the, so I, you know, obviously you made changes on this document. When would, when did we see that first document with the first proposal? Was that back in?
That would have been back in June.
June, okay, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, so we would have done um two readings of a preliminary budget in June. So the first meeting, the second meeting in June, and then from there, it's prepared for the annual meeting.
Yeah.
August is really just kind of fine tuning any of the staffing changes we have and then waiting for all the state factors, which is our uh enrollments and um the uh state aids and then the property value number, which we give in October.
Yeah.
And then with that, we can kind of finalize the actual budgets for our different funds. So the following five pages walk through our operating budget, which is our general fund. And then from there, we moved into um our special education fund, our gift donation fund, which is twenty-one debt service, which is Fund Thirty's and Fund Forty, which is basically tracking the payment for the um all sports boosters payment on the athletic entrance.
Yep.
And then we have our food service budget, which is Fund Fifty, uh, community service fund. And then Fund Ninety is our co-op program, which we have with Williams Bay, and that really is the CCA program. We did a net Fund Ninety because years ago we had, I think, five school districts as well. So then, if you look at the next page, I think provides kind of that levy piece. And again, two point seven four increase overall in terms of the levy. The equalized value is going up over sixteen percent. About one percent of that is probably new construction. The rest of it's just appreciation of existing properties. So the combination of the two point seven four levy increase and then the large increase in valuation reduces that mill rate or tax rate by over eleven percent. Now, it looks good in terms of the rate, but I, I think the number for most people that is a taxpayer, the focus on is the actual levy increase and not the mill rate.
Yeah.
I think that's a little bit city. Um, and then you can see how the changes are across the different municipalities. And even though the overall sixteen percent, the change within each municipality varies. And that affects the distribution of the actual levy then, as we sell. Um, and I think the last section on this page, I, I didn't get a chance to update that at this time, but if you go, Jason, to the certification statement, which is the next agenda item. Right there. And the bottom portion will show the actual levy then for each of the municipalities and how that changes. So all the factors in terms of adopting the budget, and of course, our fiscal year starts in July, so technically we're almost a quarter of the way through school year before we have those factors.
And last year, and how this varies, so residents in Elkhorn, if I read this correctly, could probably expect to not feel a substantial impact on their taxes regardless of, but last year, when we all got reassessed, Elkhorn had
Oh my gosh. Mine went up twenty-six percent.
Yeah, so this year, they probably expect to have a lesser impact where some of the other municipalities may have redone their reassessments. It always balances out at the end, but it does impact differently from your year.
It gives you a sense across the municipalities of what that percentage change might be, but then again, when you bring it down to the individual taxpayer, it's, it's another level to not fully, you know, the actual impact. Situation's different.
And the tax credit this year will also have a different.
It's going to have some impact, yeah.
Is it safe to assume those that have the higher increase may also have a higher tax credit or we just don't know how they're distributing?
It's distributed by municipality first, so then from that distribution, it's hard to say. The increase on a percentage basis could be as high as twenty-five to twenty-seven percent. So I guess you could look at your old tax bill if you use that as an estimate, uh, but again, it's an estimate, so.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Trump? So first, we have to adopt the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four district budget, looking for a motion.
I'm moving to adopt the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four district budget as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I moved in seconded to adopt the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four district budget as presented. Do we do this as a roll call?
Um, I believe the budget adoptions are.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mr. Yeah, uh, excuse Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Barkus?
Yes.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
And this is Costa.
Yes. Okay, um, Mr. Two and already presented the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four tax levy. Um, were there any questions about that? Okay, if none, then looking for a motion to approve the tax levy.
I'm moving to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year property tax levy of twenty-two million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and two dollars as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So I moved in seconded to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year property tax levy of twenty-two million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and two dollars as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Barkus?
Yes.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
This is Costa.
Yes. Alright, Mr. Representative Report.
Alright, sir, with the high school, um, this Wednesday is readiness day, which is an ACT prep day. Since I'm a senior, I don't have to go, thankfully. November tenth is the high school's annual Veterans Day assembly. And the boys soccer team is advancing the sectional, so we'd like to congratulate them and wish them luck as they continue on.
Their first sectional game is Tuesday, right?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
For the middle school, sixth graders learned about flammability through cornstarch. And the teachers enjoyed a filling dinner at parent teacher conferences and a breakfast the next day provided by Baker Meister.
Um, Jackson Elementary, first graders enjoyed the last of their garden boxes and prepared them for next spring. Um, they also had a pajama day as part of their red ribbon week. And kindergartens, kindergartners used two D shapes to build jack-o'-lanterns on hat day.
Ball festival was a major success off the Trump donation for decorations and candy donations. The kids at Westhead also had a pajama day and later a Disney day that collected around one thousand two hundred dollars between staff and students. Like Kelly Budson's scholarship.
Uh, Tibbetts fourth graders finished the end of their first reading unit by whittling soap bars and doing an escape room challenge. Uh, kindergartners made homemade applesauce with grandma G and first graders played echo songs on the tubano drums.
Elkhorn area school district, along with the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, recognized Yunker Industries, Lakeland Resort, Palmer, Hamilton, Stemeds Builders, and Precision Plus for their continued support and contribution. And don't forget to buy our tickets because Stir It Up Twenty Twenty-Three will take place on November fifth from eleven AM to two PM at the high school. We're up to twenty-four chefs and restaurants for your stomach. All proceeds will go to local nonprofits and high school music programs.
Um, CCA, Elkhorn Youth Build participated in an employer tour at Wisconsin Oven. And again, Elkhorn area school district recognized five partners that are continues for the image on the right shows Stemeds Builders. And the other ones were Yunker Industries, Lakeland Resort, calling out Hamilton and Precision Plus.
Okay, great, thanks, guys. Alright, Financial Stability Committee update.
Alright, we had a, another meeting after having a, a week or a meeting off. Um, I believe we're really beginning wrapping up by what we purchased, kind of that masterclass on school finance and that deep dive just to wrap everyone's head around what it looks like, what is involved and so forth. And again, having preliminary discussions around um strategies, what are potential options to look at and so forth and, and how to move forward. So I think the group's beginning to formulate um, some ideas and discussion around that and recommendations. And also looking at what we've already done in the past, um, because it is something that we look at each year on an annual basis. So we'll prepare a report at the next meeting for that. That was something they asked was to look at all those dollar savings from the past that we've done and created and then try to put estimated dollars on the potential ideas that were shared um, from a larger menu that was looked at. There was also a request for a survey of staff to get some sense of where they're at. And we sent that out to staff that hopefully will provide some good data for the ad hoc committee to look at as it relates to, you know, issues that pertain to staff, like their class size, their workload, their compensation, their benefits, all these areas. As um salary and benefits make up seventy-five, eighty percent of the budget.
Yep.
So the reality is that's where a lot of, you know, when you're looking at shortcuts and so forth, it's how do we problem solve around that area dynamic and what's that potential impact look like? Um, so a lot of the other twenty percent of the budget is really a lot of fixed costs that you don't necessarily have a whole lot of control over. Not that there's not areas, but, you know, those are things we'll discuss and look at. Any other anything to add to that?
Um, I, I think that's pretty much, I, there was some thought about they wanted to talk about the past referendum and fair hail referents, I think, but that on the agenda too.
Okay.
Yeah, I know Julie and both of you were there.
No, I think they, I think they want to understand um, on the last referendum, how we can better communicate um, the message in a maybe more clear, clearer way. But yeah, that'll be a good, good conversation.
Yeah, the, um, the Financial Stability Committee is an ad hoc committee. Um, Ed serves on it and Devin, yeah. But as board member, you are welcome to attend that meeting if you I would say it would be probably helpful for you just to kind of try and get up to speed on the whole financial stuff, so.
There are Mondays at six o'clock upstairs. And I don't know, the room feels bigger than this room, even though they're the same.
Same size.
Size. It feels better.
It does.
Yeah. So, yeah, six o'clock, Monday's opposite of the regular work.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay, so we have um the first reading of revised policies.
Okay, we have a number of policies on there and I know you've all had the access to that. There's any, I'll go through these quickly. If there's anything you want to discuss, let me know. The policy committee recommended striking the definitions, felt that it was redundant or not necessary there. Um. Also, the, the primary premise of it was with it being considered anti-racism policy, others were definitely there with other policies that related to non-discrimination and that there wasn't really a need to bring in those other criteria
Right.
Into the anti-racism policy. So a lot of the other strikes on the language were related to those other protected classes that aren't related to uh races.
Um, Jason, I did, I took another kind of hard look at this um again, and I just have some minor things that I'd like to potentially change, but you know, certainly have the discussion around it. Um, under leadership and administration, um, the first sentence, the Elkhorn area school district shall address systemic racism as follows. We struck the word systemic in the first paragraph below, and I think we should strike it in that sentence as well.
Um, makes sense.
Um, and then under number two, under that same uh area, um, school counselors shall be responsible for educating students and families as equal partners. I guess I'd like to see the word equal versus equitable. Um, equitable doesn't really quite make sense in that context. Um, equal is, I feel, a better term. Because I think that's the message that we're communicating is that, um, that we're equal partners. Does that make sense?
It does. I think so, yeah. Yeah, it's a better, better word.
Yeah. Um. And then uh, number three, under that same area, uh, the school district shall implement alternative discipline processes. I'm wondering if the word shall is the appropriate word, um, because yeah, because shall is
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and if there's an alternative discipline process, I don't think we always have to have that in every instance, you know, an alternative discipline process would not be used. Um. And then I think the only other one was more of a, um, just a minor thing, under policy enforcement, number one, um, statute of collateral, review findings that provide an annual report to the school board regarding racial disparities in areas that may include but are not limited to, I, I think we're just missing a word there from a medical standpoint. That was all I had, but minor changes, but.
Very good. Anything else, anyone else would like to, anything else? Anyway, yeah, anyway, that's what.
This is just a first reading, so.
First reading, yeah. If you have any recommended changes, you know, let me know or you can bring it to the next meeting. Or as early graduation. Um, modifying that language to represent the entire district. And added a, would like them to have an exit meeting um, with myself or a designated, we do have them complete a survey, but what the, and the early graduation requests go through the policy committee. It's not like a if they have the credits and they've completed that, they get approved. But um, one of the things that have come up is we've wondered, I'd say, you know, have they really looked at all of these other options? Because sometimes we'll have kids, they'll say, oh, I want to graduate in December so that I can start at Gateway. Well, you could attend Gateway on the district's dime during the second half of the school year.
Right.
And that's really a win-win for us because going to Gateway is less expensive. And that's really a win-win for us because going to Gateway is less expensive. Obviously, for them, it doesn't cost them anything, but it also, you know, paying for a full load for a student at Gateway is actually less than the amount of revenue that we collect from them still being in school on that for Friday count. So those were some of the things. Just double check and, and I know, I believe the school counselors are doing a good job going through that. I think most cases just, they just want that opportunity. Or sometimes they feel like, hey, this makes my request look better if I put down that I'm doing that, but it just gives that other chance.
Yeah.
And then the procedures, this is a proposal to just delete that because it's part of the graduation policy. She put them there and then hiring procedures, three thirty-one. On some changes there. With the adoption, this is really updating and bringing in line with our we use the we can system and that systematic approach. So a lot of those items are provided in their, their portfolio, their application they put in there. Also, modifying the language related to the interviewing committee. We do a lot of, when we get to the interviewing season for professional staff, teaching is really a unique profession because it comes all within a short window, a fast period. Something like, I think, private industry, you know, it's generally spread out. So that is a modification or a change, but when it comes to, we added language with respect to head principal, director positions. We added language related to those interviews.
Yeah, the policy committee felt like we wanted to include additional people in that interview process, so it kind of spells that out there.
Yeah. Any questions on any of that? I think it's just the first reading.
Yep. Okay. Personnel is the next item on the agenda.
I have a few personnel items. I want to thank Tori Castine, who served as our food service director for the past, I think, two years. Right, calling Ellen Neesher's retirement. Want to wish her the best for last day with us is going to be November third. As she accepted a position, I believe, with the county. Then we have three appointments now. Natalia Espinoza is a middle school, high school, avid tuner. Paul Jacobson is a middle school boys assistant basketball coach and Trevin Keller is a middle school boys basketball assistant coach.
Need a motion to approve the recommendation sheet for personnel.
I'll move to approve the personal recommendation sheet for October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district candidate drug screening as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I moved in second to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening as presented. A roll call vote, please.
You can do that.
Oh, oh, sorry. And all in favor? And opposed? All right. Motion passes. And then acceptance of school gifts.
All right, we have two gifts to present this evening. An anonymous donator donated thirty-five-five-dollar Culver's gift cards to be given to the students of the week at Options. It's valued at a hundred and seventy-five dollars. And the Westside Elementary P T A has donated one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to support the classrooms of new teachers and teachers who have transferred to different grade levels.
So great. Thank you to the anonymous donor and to the Westside Elementary P T A. We need a motion to accept these gifts.
I move to accept the generous school gifts as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And seconded, or to accept the generous school gifts as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Great. Any announcements, Jason?
You know, I would, I would just share that sincere appreciation to the community. A lot of businesses with the passing of Mr. Wolf a couple of weeks ago, it was, you know, really difficult and challenging for the staff, for the Wolf family and his relatives. And we had a lot of very generous businesses that helped out with lunches and food and individuals. I know the staff really appreciated that. I also, the staff really stepped up in providing support to the Wolf family. I know Nikki Wolf reached out this morning, wanted me to thank and share her appreciation to all the staff for providing the meals for the family and meals at the reception that they had. And, and providing the school facilities for them to use for his services. So just want a, a general, you know, heartfelt appreciation across the board.
I, I'm going to put a plug in for the Run for Randy five K run walk. So if you don't want to run, you can walk it. It's going to be November eighteenth. And if you want flyers to put up in businesses where you haven't seen one, I know people have done a pretty good job of getting those flyers out. But we also have yard signs that were printed and I probably have so thirty-five yard signs left in my office that need to go out. We have got fifty printed total. And if anybody lives or works on a pretty high-traffic area, stop in our design studio. I've got all the flyers and the yard signs there for people to pick up. Feel free to do that and get them out.
Because we're not in a high-traffic area, but I have about nine hundred trick-or-treaters coming past.
There you go. QR code for the registration is on that yard sign, so. Okay, great, thanks. I just kind of bring some tonight and then, sorry.
Yeah.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
All right.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
This is Ingersoll?
Yes.
This is Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Barkus?
Yes.
Mr. Forster?
Yes.
And Mrs. Costa?